We're on.
We're on, Laura.
Welcome and welcome to the January 21st, 2015 meeting of the Glendale City Planning Commission. May I have the roll call, please?
Planning Commissioners Astorian.
Here.
Landrigan.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Yesian.
Here.
And Chairperson Manukian.
Here. May I have a report regarding the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was posted on Wednesday, January 14th, 2015, on the bulletin board outside City Hall and on the city's website.
Thank you very much. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is the election of chairperson and chairperson pro tem, requiring me to read the following language. This is the time of year to elect a new chairperson. First, staff will ask for nominations. Commission members state their nominations. No second is required. Following all nominations, staff will then ask for a vote on the first nomination. If a majority vote is received, a new chairman, chairperson is elected. If not, staff repeats the procedure with the second commission member nominated. This process is repeated until a new chairperson is elected. Please proceed with nominations.
Are there any nominations from the floor?
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Greg Astorian.
Are there any further nominations? Bearing none. All in favor of Greg Astorian would be Planning Commission, Planning Commission Chairman?
Aye.
Aye.
I didn't want to be too obsequious about it, so I'm just going to keep quiet. Thank you.
This is for Laura.
Yeah, wait a minute.
Chairman Manukian, we want to thank you first for what you have been able to provide to the commission in your term as a chair. And I think you've done a wonderful job, and I'm sure that my colleagues would agree with that.
Thank you very much.
All right, so let's go.
The applicant just submitted.
Yeah, we got this before.
I'm just going to change the name tag.
Yes.
And we also have an election of a chair pro tem. Sorry?
The election for chair pro tem.
Just go from the applicant.
Any nominations?
Yeah, no copies.
Commissioner Stephanie Landrigan. Any other nominations? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Congratulations to you two. We're going to move to item number five on the agenda, which is the approval of minutes from October 29th as well as November 5th of 2014. You have a second on those?
I do have one change to one of the minutes. Trying to find the one here. This was the special meeting minutes for October 29th. In the... Actually, maybe that's the wrong one. Thank you. The special meeting one is October 29th. In our recommendation, we did discuss the pedestrian front entry of the property, and that's not included in there, how it was not pedestrian friendly. And I'd like that added to it, if that would be possible. That would be on page four to that list. You do have interest for the residential is a concern, but it's really more about the street than the entrance. With that change, I will recommend approval.
So, we don't need a roll call for it.
No.
Okay, so move. So, let us move to the next item on the agenda, which has to do with oral communications. I believe all of you present here tonight are not here just to... or are there any oral communications?
Well, I was just going to point out that we actually have not only the minutes of the 21st, but we also have November 5th minutes.
I read them in...
So were they both, they were both approved? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you for clarifying.
So I don't believe that anybody here is to talk about general items that interest Glendale or your soaps. And with that, we're going to go to item number seven, which has to do with zoning appeals. There is no old business, and let's talk about the new business. And the first case at hand is at 318 Brockmont Drive. And this next item is, am I doing the right thing, Ms. Toddler, is an appeal from the decision of the planning hearing officer. This matter is heard as a de novo hearing. Testimony given at the planning hearing officer's hearing should be repeated because, a hearing should be repeated because the commission does not review the tapes of those meetings. Decisions rendered today will be based on the evidence presented at this hearing and the evidence in the file, including appeal documents, staff reports, and letters received. Individuals speaking today should therefore present all evidence which they may wish this commission to consider. A handout describing the appeals process available at the front counter. All appeal items are considered public hearing. The commission will consider testimony from the appellant, applicant, staff, and any member of the public wishing to speak. If you wish to speak, please, if you haven't already done so, fill out a card and present it to the recording secretary. With that, I am going to go to, I believe, Mr. Collin.
Yes, sir.
And also, I just want to make the public aware, we did receive a late letter that just came in today. We've made copies, and it is available on the desk by the door.
Mr. Collin, you may proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. The subject appeal is located at 318 Brockmont Drive. It is an R1R zone property for Area District Two. The general plan designation for the property is low-density residential. The subject property is approximately 5,880 square feet and is irregularly shaped. Lot has frontage on Brockmont Drive and slopes down from Brockmont Drive with a series of terraces as a lot goes from north to south. Original house was built in 1959 and was damaged by fire in November 2010. The damage was significant enough that the existing house could not be repaired. If the house could have been repaired at its previous location, it would have been allowed to keep its existing nonconformities without variances for a period of two years. After the fire, the house was demolished down to foundation in 2011 under building permit number BB 1114081. Only the foundation of the previous house and the swimming pool still exist on site. The previous house had nonconforming street front and interior setbacks, as well as garage dimensions and driveway distance. The applicant is proposing to rebuild the house in a similar location to the previous residence destroyed by the fire, utilizing the existing foundation walls, including the foundation wall toward the front of the new house. Property lost its nonconforming rights to rebuild as was previously approved due to the fact that the site has been unused for two years. The applicant, or an appellant, is proposing to construct a new 2,908 square foot, three-story house with a two, one-car garages on, as mentioned, 5,880 square foot lot. The appellant is requesting the reversal of the planning hearing officer's denial of five standards variances that include, number one, construction of a new residence on a lot with less than 7,500 square feet; second, to exceed the allowable floor area by 596 square feet; third, to allow a three-story house where only two stories are permitted; fourth, to allow a driveway length of 1 foot 3 inches; and fifth, to permit a one-car garage with an interior width of 10 feet where 12 foot is required. In addition to the five standards variance, the project as proposed requires approval of three setback variances that include, first, construction of a new residence with a street front setback of 1 foot 3 inches where 15 feet is required; second, interior setbacks of 5 feet where 10 feet is required; third, interior setbacks of 3 feet 8 inches where 10 feet is required. Planning hearing officer denied all of the applicant's request due to the fact that all four required findings could not be met for each variance request. In order for the variance to be considered, all four required findings must be met. Staff recommends the planning commission sustain the planning hearing officer's decision to deny the requested variances. And that concludes my presentation. The plans are located on the closest panel to you, directly behind you, and staff's available for questions.
Mr. Chair.
I'm Mr. Chair, and Mr. Collin, the letter that was submitted today, that I just looked at, that came from Quaham of Vaatch, LFP. Have you had a chance to take a look at their letter?
No, sir.
Because the content of the letter seems like they're making some concessions or modification to like two-story buildings and so on. What we have here for our review, what we have reviewed is actually a plan for a three-story house and a lot of the findings that you've already made. So I guess, I don't know if this is a legal question or not, should this be sent back to the planning before it comes back to us again? Because now I think we're comparing apples and oranges at this point.
Chair Astorian and members of the planning commission. The applicant, it's true that the applicant has effectively submitted a letter withdrawing several of their variances. However, the plans before you represent a proposed structure that is seeking all of the variances, and the plans don't represent what the revised project might look like. If the planning commission feels that it can fairly rule on certain variances and not others, it may do so, but it does not appear to me like that will be possible in such a large project with so many different variables at play here. If you do want to do that, you might want, you might have to condition the variance very carefully since they are withdrawing, if I counted correctly, three of their variances. The planning commission can certainly remand it back to the planning hearing officer if that is something that they feel would be more efficiently handled by the hearing officer. The, you know, just sort of an editorial comment, the applicant might be better served if they want to withdraw their appeal and reapply for new variances, or, you know, that might be the best course, but it just doesn't seem fair. I mean, legally, the planning commission can consider their appeals withdrawn, but it just doesn't seem fair to you to have, to make you consider, make that decision based on the plans currently before you.
And if I may, the, what is being withdrawn, really, the city attorney, it has to do with site-specific design. And I don't know how the application of those variances will play out.
Exactly.
You know, just having parted a pie, cut in the manner that you want, and then taking it out, and then putting it back, it just doesn't do it. And I'm afraid if we are going to walk that path, you know, hear this, considering the three withdrawals of the variances, we don't know how the ultimate site has to be designed and so forth, so, and the ultimate variance needed. So I, it will be difficult for me to make a judgment on that. Commissioner Landrigan?
I concur. One of the legal requirements of our review is stamped plans. They are legally binding, and a letter is not. And unless I have stamped plans that show how this is implemented and it's legally banned by a licensed professional, I think that we're in a dilemma in looking at what is proposed in prose as opposed to what is proposed in actual construction documents. So I would really hesitate to go along with any reconsideration of the letter as, as something for us to make a determination on.
Commissioner Manukian, do you have any input on that?
Given the fact that three of the members of the commission have already weighed in, I don't think so, no.
So then, just the housekeeping, basically, if we want to go forward, and we have to go forward with it, I'm going to give the appellant the customary 15 minutes, and at that juncture, he may want to withdraw his, would that be acceptable, to withdraw his application, Ms. Toddler?
I believe he has to have an, we have to have a written withdrawal of his application. And we would want it specific, whoever the applicant was who actually signed the application is the person who would need to withdraw it. And so it's not only the applicant, but it's also the appellant. I believe it's the same person.
Yes.
But, so we would want to make sure that we have that for the file. And we would want to know exactly what they are withdrawing, because we do have several different variances, so we would want to know exactly what, what he is proposing to withdraw. But I would say that it doesn't look like he's withdrawing all of them. This is a notice hearing for all of the variances. You do have a project description and plans that show all of the variances. You can continue the hearing and continue, and you can consider all of the, everything that's been noticed for the hearing, including all the variances, should you wish to proceed that way.
So if we continued it, and they came, they could come back with a new plan and everything to reflect what the changes that they want?
It would be...
They don't have to submit a brand-new application for that?
I believe they do need to submit a new application, because this is no longer the same project. If you saw the, you know, in the letter that's attached to the packet, you'll see there's a large number of findings that need to be made and considered as part of the hillside ordinance. Hillside ordinance itself is very site-specific, and it's design-specific in addition to the variances that we have to consider.
So, to get you, you know, what you're trying to say is that what we have received today, the information of their withdrawals, what we are weighing, if we continue with this hearing, is really to weigh in on the seven variances that we have before us.
It's the project that the applicant submitted.
So then we make a decision on that.
And the project that we're starting, exactly. And Yvette will correct me if I'm wrong, but yeah, you may proceed with everything that has been included in the notice and that the applicant submitted.
Chairman Astorian, if I may. Perhaps procedurally speaking, we can continue this hearing to a date certain, it can be as short as two weeks. In the interim, the applicant can withdraw their application, the current application, resubmit one, which encompasses all the issues that they have listed in their January 21st letter. And from that point on, city staff and applicant can move forward with that application, and then in the meantime, we can take the matter off calendar, the continuance off calendar.
You would have two things going, and Yvette will correct me if I'm wrong, but you actually have an appeal that's live. You have an appeal on seven different variances for this project. If he was to come into with a new project description, that would be a new filing. It's a new project. It's a new review. So it wouldn't be coming back in two weeks. It's something we would need to...
No, no, I understand.
Send to the departments for review. But, so we would actually, in that case, have two live applications.
No, no, my point was, we can continue this to a date certain.
Yes.
In the meantime, they would withdraw this application completely. This appeal would then be dead. They would resubmit an application for variances which articulate what they're saying in this letter.
Absolutely, they could.
And then, now we would again have an application that the city staff could deal with accordingly.
That would be correct. A new filing would be subject to review by the planning hearing officer.
Commissioner Landrigan?
It's my understanding, and I appreciate the correction if wrong, that if we do allow the applicant, appellant to speak, we have to open the public hearing completely.
Yes, you would.
So you would have to, we would have to hear, we'd have to have rebuttal. We'd have to have the whole hearing go on. It can't be, you know, reduced hearing.
Well, if we are going to open, it's not going to be reduced hearing, but I am now thinking the practical side of the whole thing. We have neighbors and folks that are here that want to be heard, but I'm not sure if they're going to be heard on what eventually is going to be this project or not, and I don't know how efficient that is. So, and at this point, because I have not heard anything from the applicant slash appellant, how, I can't just say we're not going to open the public hearing either, so.
But we, one of us could move continuance and, without opening hearing at all.
Then...
Legal possibility.
Correct. If you, if you would, if you'd make that motion, then that would just be continued to a date certain. And again, it could be a very short amount of time so that you can determine, as Commissioner Manukian mentioned, you could, the applicant could have time to figure out what they were doing.
Why are you looking at me?
Well, then I'm open to it.
Yeah, definitely. I mean, this letter just came in today. I saw it right before the meeting, so I think it needs a lot more time to, for it to be developed a little bit more. So I would support a continuing.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we move this matter to a date certain.
Could I be heard on the order?
I don't think so.
Mrs. Manukian, I don't believe so.
Yeah.
No, you got to be on the board.
I think maybe you can raise it with our legal counsel, but you can't do it publicly.
But it is a public hearing, that's the...
Well, it's not open yet.
It's not open as a public hearing at the moment.
Although, Mr. Chairman, we could take a very short recess during which time the gentleman can consult with our attorney.
Yes, that would be...
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we call for a recess.
Second.
Yeah.
So moved.
Okay.
[coughs]
Okay, we're back on.
So you're back on from our recess in regards to Brockmont property. And Mrs. City Attorney, what was your colloquy about with, with the appellant slash applicant?
Chair Astori and members of the Planning Commission, the appellate made it very clear that he does not wish this hearing to be continued. He wants the hearing to go forward. So at this point, my advice to the Planning Commission is if you can consider the, I believe, four variances that were left on the table and not withdrawn, based on the plans that are before you today, if you can make that piecemeal determination based on the plans and possibly condition the variances if you're going to approve some of them or deny some of them, Planning Commission should go and do that. However, if you feel that you must consider the project as a whole, that is another option as well. You can consider all seven variances tonight. But the appellant has made it very clear that he does not want this hearing to be continued and that I don't believe, I'll let him speak once you open the public hearing, I don't believe he's interested in withdrawing the appeal.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Lee.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if we are going to consider this case, we will be considering this case based on the fact and based on the drawing that's been submitted. I don't think we should consider the, the letter of some of the changes that's been made. That's will not be fair to our making the fair decision. So if we are to go ahead, then we should really rely on the facts and the records and the reports that's been before us, that's submitted before us.
Thank you, Commissioner Lee. Any other comments? We are going to start the hearing. We are going to start with the appellant. You are going to have 15 minutes and then we are going to hear from everybody else interested in the matter to the tune of five minutes each person. And then, of course, you are going to have a rebuttal time of approximately five minutes. Now, this is, these are all guidelines. You don't have to take the whole thing, if you know what I mean. Let's start with Mr. Arnold, is it Grano?
Grayham.
Grayham. All right. You have 15 minutes, sir.
And I just want to clarify, it's 15 minutes for the entire.
For the entire applicant.
For the whole team.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Again, my name's Arnold Graham. I'm an attorney. My office is at 500 North Brand, Suite 1030 in Glendale. I've been an attorney in Glendale for some 25 years. This.
Go ahead, sir.
I'm sorry. This matter, as we've indicated in our correspondence to you and respectfully, Mr. Lee, we would like to have a big part of the record because it represents our current position. What we've done here is we've significantly attempted to ratchet down the scope of this appeal to three basic issues. Number one, allowing the property to be used as it was used for 30, 40, 50 years. We acknowledge that it's a substandard lot, it's smaller square footage, as Ms. Dotler indicated in her papers. Her decision, it can't grow because all of the properties around it have been developed. So there's no ability to enlarge the property. The other aspect of it is, is the distance between the street and the proposed structure, which we're trying to, we want to mirror what preexisted so we can build basically on the previous footprint, use the preexisting foundations. There are an issue, the other part of our appeal had to do with the setbacks on the west side and the east side. On the west side, it's 3.5 feet. On the east side, we originally applied for 3.6, or 3 feet. Ms. Dotler concluded that was too small for a fire department access, which requires 3.3 feet 6 inches. We've expanded that to 6 feet 6 inches. Another sub-issue, which is only tangentially involved, relates to the pool slab which goes up to the adjoining property owner. As a part of expanding that, that access on the, on the east side, we're going to cut back that pool slab so that the, the edge of the pool is co-terminous with the, the side of the property. So that'll be one setback, the entire distance. And therefore, you don't have any issues of fire department access. It's more than their standards require. So those three applications, once those are approved, then we can go back to the Planning Department and, and submit to the Planning Department what our proposed plan of development is. And the importance of that is, is that we'd like to know that we can build on this property before we have to go through another planning process. And purpose of this is, is to eliminate the issues of the FAR, which had been applied for previously, elimination, the issue of the square footage that is excess of the original structure. Originally, there was 24, 23, 52 square feet. Current proposal by an architect design is less than that, 23, 47 square feet. So it's basically a replication of what had been there before, sitting on the same foundation, such that we would like to be able to use having the same setback on, on each side and having the same setback from the street. That's what we're here for tonight, to apply for, to give us that authorization to proceed and then send us back to the Planning Department to work with Brad to get the design that meets the city's criteria. And we, of course, those approvals would be contingent upon meeting the city's standards. You know, they're not absolute. They're not vested until we meet the city, the rest of the city's standards. And so in every aspect, we certainly listened to the, the neighbors when they spoke at the last hearing. We took into consideration what their concerns were about an oversized house, a three-story house. And so what is being proposed would be a one-story up and one-story down, and one-story above the street grade. And it's, again, as I said, it'd be 23, 47 square feet, which is smaller than the original. And it, on the west side, on the Malloy side, that would be constructed basically as it preexisted before. As Mr. Malloy stated in his, in his letter, he wouldn't be opposed if there were that privacy protection on that side, conceptually, as I read his letter. He's not in disagreement with the project, but only that he felt he had a loss of privacy. The last hearing, and I don't think it was from the Malloy's, but it came up in the hearing that there was some sort of an easement on the west side of the property that somehow protected, prevented us from being able to use that easement. Well, we went to the title company, the other title records, and there wasn't easement. Previous owner back in 1961 wanted to reserve a right to go onto that. She owned both properties. She wanted to reserve a right to go on our client's property to plant flowers or do some landscaping and so forth. But it's a personal easement. It's basically in the form of a license. It's not an easement. It doesn't, for those of you who are real estate acquainted, it doesn't run with the land. It doesn't bind anybody. It doesn't track the title. So therefore, it doesn't pass on to any successive owner. For her, it was personal to her because it allowed a personal use of that property while she was alive or until she transferred it while she's long deceased and the property has been transferred. So that easement doesn't exist. And it shouldn't even be called an easement because it's really in the form of a license. So all that being said, we recognize, and as Ms. Dotler recognized when she heard the underlying matter, that if you go in and we have to tear out those foundations and start all over again, there's going to be a significant deformation of the landscape, lots of hauling and digging and grading and that kind of thing. So we want to go in and reuse those same foundations to allow us to continue. And again, respectfully, we don't want to start all over again because number one, another $15,000 fee to do that. And we've kind of gotten caught up in the processes. But what we're really requesting is to give us those contingent approvals so then we can work from them with our architect and with Brad to get a design that meets the city's standards in full conformance with the FAR standards and conformance with the, the square footage issues, all of those things that are in the normal planning, in the planning process. And once that occurs, there's no longer an issue before the Planning Commission. So it's those three exceptions to the literal wording of the ordinance that we're seeking. And that's what our case is. And that's why we sought to reduce it, really contract it down into the essentials that are important to, for us to go forward, for the community to see what we're doing, for Brad to know exactly what is approved so we can present a design to him that meets the city's standards. That's our goal and objective. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you have a question, Nate?
Any questions from?
I have a question. Yeah, Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Sounds like you have, from previous hearing, reflected some of the concerns of the neighbors. And, you know, in your statement, you have designed the house to conform to the FAR Point 4, which is under 2,300. And you elected to, to give us, you know, a letter today, pretty much, you know, I guess, cut us by surprise. I guess, you know, it seems like if you would have been a little bit more proactive and brought this information out in public or to our engineer planner to, to look at it, it'd give us a little bit more, you know, warmer feeling to weigh in, you know, weigh in this case. Still, what we do not have in front of us is, even though you reduced the square footage on your house to meet the requirements, and you have, let's say, satisfied three of the, the variances that you no longer require than you are seeking for, you know, what we don't know is that, we're looking at this case as a whole. So we can certainly put conditions on this, but we can, I don't think we can piecemeal this thing here. And what we're disadvantaged with is that we do not have full set of plans how that structure, how that, what you're proposing is going to affect, you know, the setbacks, the driveways and so on. That's what we're trying to, you know, say to you. So anyways, my, I guess, advice to you is that when you have this type of application put in, you know, do not, you know, comment on the hearing date and, and surprise us. You know, give us ample time to review your case.
I appreciate that, and I apologize for that happening.
No, no reply necessary.
All right.
It was, it was rhetorical. So please have a seat because I got to.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Plenty of time, not plenty of time left. Marta Phillips. You have five minutes, ma'am.
Thank you. Good evening, Planning Commissioners. My letter actually this evening is based on the plans that you have before you with the seven variances. And I think I'm going to, if it's all right, just ignore the letter that was submitted last minute and go ahead with what I have prepared this evening, if that would be acceptable.
Of course.
Okay. My name is Marta Phillips and I live with my husband Sheldon Phillips at 301 Brockmont Drive. Our home is located directly to the north of the vacant lot proposed structure. Prior to purchasing our home three and a half years ago, we contacted the city of Glendale to inquire about the disposition and plans for the fire-stricken home at 318 Brockmont Drive. In performing our due diligence, we wanted to ensure that any proposed structure would not exceed the allowable building codes and subsequently block our view completely of the Hollywood Hills to the south. In response to our concerns, we received confirmation from staff in the Planning Department that any renovation or new construction would require that the original footprint and elevation of the preexisting house be maintained. We purchased our home confident that the opinion of the city would prevail, and we looked forward to the reconstruction of the charming home that stood there previously. We feel that the proposed structure significantly defies the footprint, elevation, and character of the original house and will completely block our view of the Hollywood Hills that could be previously seen over the roof line of the original structure. We feel that applying for more than one variance in order to squeeze an oversized structure onto a much smaller lot is abusing the variance privilege. Applying for several variances is not only an insult, but a complete waste of time and taxpayer dollars. We really resent having to be here tonight to help defend and protect our neighborhood from the threat of unreasonable development. We and our neighbors take great pride in the neighborhood and the character of our homes. We do not treat our homes as business ventures. Yet clearly, Mr. Lutz is bent on maximizing square footage for inordinate financial gain. Although we could all attempt to build to our absolute maximum capacity or potential, as suggested by Mr. Lutz's attorney, building codes and regulations will not allow it. We were attracted to the neighborhood based on the character and the originality of the homes. Building a home such as Mr. Lutz proposes would not only be an eyesore, but would set a dangerous precedent for our neighborhood and other neighborhoods in Glendale. Building a home that does not conform in scale or architectural character is unacceptable and wrong. Any consideration of such is an insult to the integrity of the neighborhood and to the surrounding homeowners. We greatly appreciate that the city of Glendale and the Northwest Homeowners Association are working diligently to help preserve the architecture, scale, and character of our neighborhoods. We thank the Planning Commission's consideration of our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips.
We'd like to leave you with photo documentation to support our concerns, if you will accept that.
Sure thing.
Would you like my, as well there?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Mr. Gary Neay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Astori and Planning Commissioner.
Mr. Story, in Planning Commission, I'm here to oppose the project. I was here to oppose the project in the first go-around. I support the city's findings in the first initial eight variances. I now feel that this is a waste of your time and my time if I have to go back and piecemeal this thing out. The gentleman either withdraws the entire project or you deny the entire project. He brings it back, and then we find out what we're talking about and what we're going to, what we're going to see and what we're going to evaluate. So I vote, or I would encourage you to ask them to take away the project or deny it as the city denied it in the first go-around. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Neve. Lean Neve?
I just wanted to add, we live directly above the house that's planned, so we're across the street. And it's, we've been in this house for 42 years. We built it with a friend of ours, and never in a million years did we think that the house in front of us would burn down to the ground. But it is a very big concern for us and for also our property value that a similar structure goes into that existing lot. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Jim Cusman?
It's very interesting, isn't it? You know, I'm sympathetic to the $15,000 fee. Somebody took it upon themselves to spend the $15,000 and design that thing, fully expecting you to approve it. There's no other reason to have done it. And when it was denied, when all these people here who live on that street stood up and said, enough is enough, just build a house exactly like was there. They won't have a beef about one thing about that. Not one, setback, no setback, nothing. But they came, they spent a lot of money coming up with this proposal that desecrates the neighborhood. They want you to approve it, and they expected you to approve it. And now, instead of spending another $15,000 and coming up with a whole panel full of drawings that we can look at and talk about, they're asking you to basically say, trust us. Approve the three things that won't come up with a beautiful design that you're going to love and every, all these people are going to love. Why should we ever do that? Why would I ever trust these people who don't even live in Glendale to come up with a plan that these people are going to like? It's beyond me. So kill the whole thing, go and deny it, let them spend another $15,000 that we can spend on a park or cover in a bus bench, and, and, and give us something we can look at. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cusman. Ms. Jennifer Freeman?
I'll be fairly quick at this point. Jennifer Freeman, I live two houses down on the other side of the Malloy's, and a very similar piece. We are, we are supportive of building a similar home in the area and the issues that we brought up before. It's encouraging to see that he's now, at this point, willing to take that into consideration. What concerns me is, again, I can't see those plans. And so far, the way that this process has gone, it's a lot to ask that we just trust that it will all be okay. So we, again, I would, I would urge you to go ahead and deny the project because that's not the project that wants to be built. Let's start the process over and get it right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Freeman. Don Zachary?
Good evening, Mr. Chairperson, members of the commission. Congratulations, Mr. Chairperson.
Thank you.
Mr. Graham was remarkably candid tonight. He would like to know now whether he can build on this property, and that's what we lawyers call an advisory opinion. By the way, I live at 371 Brockmont Drive, right around the corner. I don't think you should do that. I think that the appropriate procedure would be to wait till you have context, until you have facts, until you have a design, so that you can render a decision based on the actual project that Mr. Lutz plans to build. I'm all for that project. This empty lot is an eyesore and a danger to our neighborhood. We need a house here, and I'm hoping that he will come up with something that we will all love. But the, since he insists on going forward, I submit to you, lady and gentlemen, that the appropriate thing to do is to deny his application in its entirety, uphold the decision of the hearing officer, and send this back for further action. I thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, Mrs. Zachary. Mr. Guillaume LeMoyne?
We came before, a few weeks ago, in a commission of that sort, and none of us refused to see something built there. We want to see a house there, but we have a lot of concerns. My concerns are setback. We have right now 38 inches from my property line to their wall. When I hear using the same foundation, that means keeping the same setback for the new project. And I'm really concerned with that because I saw the fire there, and the fire department, we are not able to access that property at the time of the fire. So it's a big safety issue, and we have, dealing with that project, because that's the only one I know of. And when I hear using the same foundation, it means keeping the same setback. So I would be vigilant to, for the next project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Georgiana Steele Waller?
I didn't prepare something, but I have lived on Brockmont at 350 for 35 years this March, and any changes to the view of just walking your dog around that hill would be detrimental to the whole neighborhood. Also, a house that has all the bells and whistles is going to make everyone else need to redo things, and not all of us have the money. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Waller. Francis and Catherine Malloy?
Hi, how are you? We're the Malloy's. We live at 320 Brockmont. And when I grew up, I want to be Jim. I mean, I think he kind of really said it all. I just, I can't understand how we can consider something, can't understand how we can consider something that we haven't really even seen. And quite honestly, the trust factor that I have is really diminished based on all the things that have occurred. I mean, this meeting was supposed to happen back in October. I mean, it's been three months, and now to come at the last minute and change it, I got to tell you, it's very, very disappointing and concerning, and I obviously think you should dismiss this and have them start over. But I don't know if you all had an opportunity to look at some of the visuals that I provided, and I think that gives you an idea of the proximity that we live to this house that's going to get built. Brad's got it. I don't know that we need to go through it all, but I do want to point out a couple of things that I think are very, very, very critical. First of all, I think this whole situation kind of has been set off by the fact that from day, from day one, the listing agent for that lot said that there were going to be city things that needed to be demolished, specifically the slab and the pool. And despite that, Mr. Lutz and his company paid a premium for that lot, over 40% of the list price. And I know how things can get bid up, but that's significant. I think that's kind of what's cornered to some of us here, or certainly cornered him. So our current situation really is builder pays 40% above list for it. It's not required to demolish the pool or the foundation slab. I get that. They've requested seven building variance codes. Everything was denied by an incredibly thorough report that I'm sure you've read, but that was incredibly thorough. And now, basically came back, and we've been under the impression for these last, so that was April, right? Eight months, that he's coming back on the same thing. And then, the last minute throws up, again, what are we supposed to believe on this? We're good. We want a nice house next door. I mean, everybody's value goes up. We love it. We need a house. Don mentioned that. You can build a nice house with moderate variances, and as Mr. Graham mentioned, we're against the 40% FAR, the third level, all of which it seems like they've acquiesced to. But again, we're very concerned about any, anything along the westerly way. And so those are really kind of the big pieces that we're concerned about, and I think, hope you'll take this into consideration. I did want to address a couple of, one last thing, and I know I might be running on time, but I think it's important, it's, the FAR, excuse me. So our solution is pretty clear. Two levels within the FAR, need to maintain our privacy and need to create, or need to ensure that we don't have the massing on Brockmont or the backend on Arbor. I did want to address the easement issue that Mr. Graham brought up, and he will obviously be, that's really, he'll be hearing from my attorney, but I do have the, not only have my grant deed, but also the deed of Mrs. Armstrong that really provides the reserving unto the grant or hearing permanent easement for landscaping and maintenance. It's not a personal easement. I'll leave copies of that with you all. Appreciate your time. We're vested, and I just want to finish. We're vested in this community on that street. You can see all the people that came to live on our street. And we really have, I think, a very low, low feeling in regards to what exactly these folks want to do on that block. And so we need to really have it all the way understood, what they want to build, so we can take a good look at it, because any trust that existed prior to has significantly diminished, and this only adds to it. So thanks a lot for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Marshall, John Marshall?
I'll be brief. This seems to me to be kind of a disingenuous attempt at legal obfuscation. First, he comes in here to appeal. If we're going to appeal what's already been done, then why aren't we doing that? Why do you, at the last minute, throw a hail mary pass and say, oh, by the way, we're going to change it at the last minute? They've had months to do that. So this is just a legal trick, and I hope you don't fall for it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Philip Keller?
Good evening, chairman and board members. My name is Philip Keller. I represent Northwest Glendale Homeowners Association. I'm here to speak on behalf of our concerns with this project. As we know, standards variance requests are special allowances to be granted by the city to a homeowner or builder to permit them to not have to meet certain minimum standards which are set forth in the city's municipal building codes and are usually required of all construction in the city. Before standards variance can be granted by the city, the applicant must first demonstrate all four findings of fact can be made. Standards variances are designed to be given to projects which represent unusual, unique, and hardship situations and are not to be doled out like simple permits obtained at the city planning department counter, which you all know. They represent allowances for very special situations, and we, the homeowners association, feel very strongly that this or any situation to allow this does not exist in this proposal before you. Oh, sorry. In all the years I've been going to speak at DRB and commissions on behalf of the homeowners association, I've never seen an applicant ask for a site unseen request for approval on anything like this. I was very surprised. They're asking for substantial allowances exceeding the square footage by almost 600 square feet, three-story on a two-story street, shorter drive lengths, narrower garage, shorter setbacks. When a landowner chooses to build on their property, they are exercising their right to do so, and the homeowners association fully supports the right. However, this right comes with a responsibility, a very important responsibility, a responsibility to deliver a project that is appropriate to the location, the site, the prevailing scale, and character of the surrounding neighborhood properties. We strongly feel that this design proposal does not live up to that responsibility and clearly does not meet the four findings of fact as supported by the staff analysis. Increased size and scale of proposed home would not be compatible with the prevailing homes. There are no other three-story homes on the street, so on and so on, as stated. The homeowners association is not opposed to development like the neighbors. We want to see something built there. We hope a well-designed, single-family home can be built on the site, one that is compatible with the prevailing character of the neighborhood in terms of scale, placement, proportion, and design. And we know this is something very obtainable by the applicant if they would simply go back and do a thoughtful redesign and resubmit as they need to. Every other applicant who comes up and submits their plans for approval for your review, they submit full current plans and asking to have a judgment on site unseen, I think, is completely unfair and unfair to the neighbors and unfair to the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. Mr. Graham, you have a five-minute rebuttal time.
Just a couple of quick items. Number one, we're not seeking an approval of the house, as it were. It just is some on what the house is going to be built on, so we can design to it. And I do have a rendering here that we just prepared late last night, early this morning to conceptualize what is, can be visualized, will be submitted to the city in terms of a reduced size, one-story house. And to address the Malloy's concerns, the design also gives them the requested privacy on their side of the property. And I'm putting up before you what the, what the design is, and I'll be glad to turn around and show it to the neighbors, show it to them afterwards. Obviously, this isn't being submitted, but it is the concept. So we can meet the city's requirements. The design will be submitted, and it is significantly smaller in scope and dimension. But we'd like to know whether we can build on the property before we go into the designing of something. And again, it goes to the city planning department. They are the ones, the ultimate determinants of whether we meet the city's standards. So thank you very much. Thank you for hearing, for hearing from us on this and letting us proceed.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions from anyone before I close the public hearing? Thank you.
Thank you.
So, by the way, if I close the public hearing, I can still chat with you, right? Stottler?
Sure.
I mean, it's, but we can, we can ask questions from the staff.
Actually, I do have one point I would like to clarify.
I think we talked with them.
It was raised, and I'm not sure if it would be a new issue, so I just want to make sure we get it during the public hearing. There was a question that came up about a potential easement or license, whichever it is, and how that could affect the design. I did put that in my letter. It did come up at the public hearing. I just want to make it clear, when you do read my letter, while I did raise it, because I heard it, I did consider the issue. That was not the reason that I denied one of those setbacks. However, I, you know, one of the findings that we have to make relates to something that could be materially detrimental. And so that was my concern, is where they were proposing a driveway and right next at that reduced setback in that area, that was my concern, is does it have a potential to be materially detrimental? It did have the potential, and so that was my concern. So I just want to make it clear that that was not my reason for denying it. I know my letter's quite thorough. You can read why I denied it. But I did mention that. I just want to make it clear that it was not a reason for denial. It was just a consideration.
Members of the planning commission, I just want, I appreciate Ms. Stottler's comments about her decision letter and that that was not one of the reasons or one of the main reasons she denied the variances. However, I just want to point out that our advice in the city attorney's office would be not to consider this issue. It is a private matter between two landowners. It should not enter into your consideration. Ultimately, when the developer submits his plan to the, plans to the building and safety department, they will have to have this matter resolved and prove to the city building and safety department that they can build on this, whether there is an easement or not, whether it goes to court or not, whether a judge decides. That is ultimately going to be left to the parties to resolve and to our satisfaction before we issue permits on the property.
So I am going to be closing the public hearing, and we are going to take a three-minute break. I was asked to do so. So it's a recess for three minutes, folks. break. I was asked to do so. So, it's a recess for three minutes, folks.
Okay, we're on.
So we are back from our short recess on the variance case, PVAR 1400517, 318 Brockmont Drive. Public hearing has been closed. Deliberation hereby starts. Mrs. Landrigan, Miss Landrigan.
Miss Landrigan, thank you. My mother's not here. My statement to Mr. Graham and to everyone here is that this is a public review, and there are required submittal materials that were not submitted in the second one. And when they're submitted, they are run by fire, they are run by police, they are run by DTA, Water and Power, the review of the codes, and the findings are made. Your suggestion that Mr. Collins review it, Mr. Collins is not the Planning Commission and does not have its authority, and we do not choose to cede that authority to the planners. It is ours. The public process cannot be avoided or minimized through the alternative process proposed by you. And so I am going to make my deliberations based upon what is here. And to me, as much as I appreciate the changes you make, I think it's another application. And I am not in support of the application as it is presented to us, so I would move to vote when it comes to pass the planning, to support the planning hearing officer's determination of denial.
I'm ready to support.
Yeah, no, I'll second that.
Any further deliberations, comments?
No, I think no need.
Okay, so if somebody wants to read something in the motion, and you have it in your pockets.
Oh, am I making the motion?
Yeah.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Landrigan, seconded by Commissioner Lee, that upon review and consideration of all materials and exhibits of current record relative to variance case number PVAR 1400517 located at 318 Brockmont Drive, and after having conducted an appeal hearing on said matter, that the Planning Commission hereby sustains the planning hearing officer's decision of denying said variance case number PVAR 1400517 in accord with the findings set forth in the decision letter of June 12, 2014.
Second.
May we please have a rule call?
Planning Commissioners, Landrigan.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Manukian.
Aye.
Yesian.
Aye.
Chairperson Astorien.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much for being here tonight, for all of your appellant applicant and folks that live in or around the area. Thank you. All right, so our next, next case is again a variance case, and that's case number PVAR 1413376. May I please ask you to just keep it down a little bit. Variance case number PVAR 141336, the property address is at 326 Kempton Road. And again, I am required to read that this item is also an appeal from the decision of a planning hearing officer. This matter is heard as de novo hearing. Testimony given at planning hearing officer's hearing should be repeated because the commission does not review the tapes of those meetings. Decisions rendered today will be based on the evidence presented at this hearing and the evidence in the file, including appeal documents, staff reports, and letters received. Individuals speaking today should therefore present all the evidence which they may wish this commission to consider. A soundout describing the appeals process is available at the front counter. Appeal items are considered as public hearing. The commission will consider testimony from the appellant, applicant, staff, and any member of the public wishing to speak. If you wish to speak, please fill out a card and present it to the recording secretary. With that, I go to again Mr. Collins.
Thank you, Chair Astorien.
So we are very fortunate. We're having you on two cases tonight.
Economy is. I'm the one that feels fortunate.
[laughing]
Sir Chair, members of the commission, as mentioned, this is a variance case located at 326 Kempton Road. The subject property is owned R1R Floor Area District 2. The general planned land use element calls for the property to be low-density residential. The property is located on the south side of Kempton Road, north of Kenneth Road. Plot size is 6,872 square feet and is currently developed with a two-story, 2,586-square-foot, single-family house and approximate 420-square-foot attached garage. The surrounding uses consist of single-family residential dwellings. On September 30, 1974, variance case number 5827S was granted with conditions to erect a dwelling three feet from the front property line and a garage one foot from the front and side property lines. The appellant is requesting reversal of the planning hearing officer's denial of the subject variance to allow a four-floor area expansion to an existing two-story, single-family house while not providing the required front setback and exceeding the maximum allowed .4 floor area ratio. Variance is required because the applicant is proposing to enclose the front entry, covered porch, and an existing breezeway at the front setback six feet from the front property line and proposing a .41 floor area ratio. The planning hearing officer denied the applicant's request to allow the floor area expansion while not providing the required front setback and exceeding the maximum .4 floor area ratio for the following project. Staff is recommending to sustain the hearing officer's decision to deny the variances. I'm available for any questions, and this concludes my presentation.
Any questions from Mr. Collins?
From our final commissioners?
One of the variances that are not being granted is based on the FAR being .41 as opposed to .40. What is that 1, .01 translate in terms of square feet?
Let me do a quick calculation. I'll get that for you.
All right.
Is it at .4 right now?
Mr. Chair, according to the staff report, it looks like it's approximately 93 feet.
That, if I'm not wrong, is less than the administrative exception?
Square feet.
Oh, not square feet, feet.
Administrative exception, we have several different choices, but in this situation, they're asking for two different variances. Typically, the administrative exception would be for just one item.
And so they're asking for two variances. One-
Setback and then the floor, to exceed the floor area.
By 175.
Approximately, what Ms. Stottler said, I believe it was 90 square feet.
Okay. Because I have, where is the number 175 coming in the staff report? Or the applicant,
I guess, right? The addition. Ms. Stottler, 175 square feet in addition? That's what's causing the 4.0 to 4.1.
Right.
Where is that 90 coming from? I think it's 175, Ms. Stottler, and it's only one. Actually, it's, they are asking for a setback variance as well. So, there are two variances. Okay. So that's why I didn't go through the administrative problem. All right. With that, any other questions from the commissioners, from the staff? None. We are going to be hearing from the applicant and the appellant, Mr. Nazarian. You have 15 minutes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Sipon Nazarian, 1230 East Broadway here in Glendale. I just want to clear that up. We're allowed to add to the property. What happened, we're allowed to add up to a certain amount. The 92 square feet is what triggers us to go over the FAR. So if we add about 85, we're fine. And in the previous meeting when we come, just one of, a few things I wanted to clear up. That, first of all, the first time we met, nobody came to complain. We had no objections. We just got denied. But I want to make it really clear that before we even applied for a variance, we spent four months going back with staff. I've met with Jay, we've met with Designer View, everybody, changing materials, changing the look of this house. Staff actually administratively in our meeting approved it. They said, "We're going to administratively approve this. It's such a small addition. You're not adding mass." I want to let you know that the roof line changes. The FAR does change. The lot coverage does not change. We're not altering the roof in any way. If I took a picture of the front of the house, this is exactly what it's going to look like when we're done. This wall is, right now, about eight feet back. Sorry, I want to say about 10 feet back. We're moving it four feet forward, six feet back to, to allow the door to change to that front area. By moving it six feet back, we're still further back than the closest point, than the furthest point that's there now. The entire house is within the front setback. There was a variance that was granted to allow the garage to be one feet back. The furthest setback from the property line right now is a little more than four feet. We're going even two feet further than that, and the reason we did that is we want to keep that break line. So then, when you're looking at this project in elevation, as an architectural elevation, it's exactly as it does, except the front door is in the front. Staff determined that this was such a minor change. They even actually told us to add a window to one of the bedrooms. They said it would look nicer. Jay requested, said that that would be a good idea. We even did that, too. We agreed. And then Milka went back and she gave me a call and said, "I'm sorry, we can't administratively approve this." She had to talk to her higher-ups, because many things can be administratively approved, but a FAR cannot. So it wasn't the reason that it was two variances. That's why we didn't, they couldn't do it administratively. The reason was that no FAR can be administratively approved, even though in the meeting they said, "Hey, this looks fine. We're willing to approve it administratively." Then she had to come back and say, "Sorry, we take that back. We can't do FARs." So the whole, the thing is, we didn't come with this project to increase the FAR and to have a mansionized house. The thing is, the house is already there. They're connected. The only thing we're trying to do is this, connect this breezeway. Because what it does is, right now, the, on the first, on the street level, you have to park your car, step outside to get back into your house. And being a newlywed couple, our client's concern was that, "I don't want my wife to have to park her car with groceries in her hand and then come outside and then have to struggle to get in her house. Why can't we just connect those two?" Staff said, "We agree. That, that, that looks fine." And to keep the original design, what we did is, where that breezeway is, we put a glass window, full height, tempered glass window, to say, "Okay, look, it's exactly like it looked like before. We're even going to put glass so that you can have that penetration. We're not adding any mass to the building," which was quoted by staff. "You're not adding any mass to the building. You're not changing the roof line. What you're doing is just connecting these two spaces." And what I want to say is, the hardship that we had is, our site, our property is well below any other adjacent property. I actually did a study and submitted it to Milka. I think staff should have it. That our property size is 6,672 square feet. The next smallest within anywhere in that neighborhood is 7,650. If we were to, and furthermore, we have a substandard lot. Current code requires a lot to be 7,500 square feet. We're 828 square feet smaller than that. So it does cause us a hardship. If we were at that, if we did have a standard-sized lot, which would be 7,500 square feet, our FAR would be about 37, or .37. We wouldn't even be at this hearing. So with that said, we were, I know the previous owner, the previous guy threw you guys a curveball. When I met with Milka, I said, "Hey, Milka, if, if I, I understand the weight of approving an FAR to the city is that you set a precedent. When the next guy comes and says, 'I want it to be bigger, too.'" So I said, "I understand that from the city's perspective. It's kind of a legal issue, and every time somebody comes up, they're going to say, 'Hey, 326 got approved.'" But the whole time when we had these meetings for the four months, it wasn't that we just decided to do an FAR. Staff had told us, "You have a pretty good argument. You're adding less than 100 square feet for this thing, and the mass is still there." If we were to alter the roof, I understand. Designer View approved it, staff approved it, and then they came back to us and says, "We can't approve it because it's a FAR." So I feel like we, we kind of got duped. Not duped, but they, they didn't know either, but it was just kind of like, it was a real curveball thrown at us at the, at the variance hearing, that we fully came in here expecting us, that the staff has our back. They told us that we have a good case, and then everything kind of fell apart. Even with that, we're still willing to reduce the FAR. And the reason we don't have an updated set of drawings is, I talked to Milka about that, and I put it in the application, actually, when we submitted it for the appeal, that if the commission isn't willing to grant us the FAR variance, at least give us the setback variance, which has already been granted, which the new setback is well behind any other portion of the property, the house that's there. And the way we would do that is, Milka said, "Because the change isn't major, you don't need to submit the new set of drawings." If you look at the elevations, if I can point out, basically, what we do, the street level, we would still push the property door to the front of the house, but on-
Nazarian, why don't you come out and point out what you, what you exactly mean? Do we have-
Yeah, we have mics up there.
A pointer?
There you go.
All right, I'll show you. So from the front elevation, we're still proposing this. And if you look at the elevation, that's what I was telling you about, that there really is no change in massing from the existing to the proposed. Still stays the same. Nothing changes on the roof line. We actually added a window here, which I thought was a good suggestion by Jay. It's a kind of, we have this solid, and it's a really dark house. We're changing the siding because this is a fire hazard now. We're doing a cedar that meets the fire code. From the floor plan perspective, you'll see what we're doing is, all that is still there. Now you have to walk outside of your garage to get in. What we're doing is setting this back one foot, connecting that. And here, that's a gate right now, we're going to put a solid piece of tempered glass, full height, almost like, give you the impression that there's nothing there. But what that allows you to do is, allows you to enter your home through your garage without having to go outside and then get back inside, and creates a little foyer there. So I feel like if Designer View was okay with it, and you'll notice here, the entire property is within the setback, even here. This garage at this point is one feet. This line that we created is, is further than any point on the property. Like, is our property line curved? So that point's actually closer. If you look at it there. We're six feet behind that, and we actually created that nook there to keep the aesthetic the same. It actually keeps, it's a nice look. And the way that we were saying that we won't exceed the FAR is, if you look at the second on the, it's actually the first floor, but the lower level, because it's lower than the street. Existing right now, we have this little nook with the breezeway. We're thinking of filling that nook in. That's what happens here. We just won't do that. We'll keep what's here, and that, then we don't exceed the FAR. But we just felt like it created the same situation. If you have, it's a guest- If you have, it's a guest house right now, which seems kind of awkward, but you have kids in the future and they want to connect to the house, they have to walk outside to get back in, we just felt like adding that back area was so minor that it wouldn't cause it, definitely doesn't cause a hardship, no neighbor has complained. Aesthetically, we're trying to keep it the same, we did the same thing here, when we closed it, we didn't close it with a solid wall, I actually added a glass and a full-height sliding glass door, which you can see here, so the penetrations look the same, you're not creating this mass. Just felt like all the changes were minor, so that, Milka said, you know, it's no need to resubmit that, that you can just show that. So if we, we still strongly feel like this should be approved because it's so minor, and we're trying to keep to the architecture so hard, and we spent so many months going back with the city, and the fact that they actually administratively were willing to approve it and they couldn't because they're not allowed to because it's FAR, it just feels like a dagger in the heart, I don't feel like, you know what I mean? It was there.
How much, how much are you adding in the back?
The back? If we lowered it, it would be about that 80 square feet, so--
So the back is 80 square feet?
Yeah, and the front area, when closing that, we'd get rid of the closet also in the front, and then it would, it would take care of that floor area thing, but it's just a matter of--
So how much square feet is added, is being added in the front?
The front right now, actually, I can tell you, it's on the, it's on the paper, but it's a little more than the ground floor, but by taking that nook and leaving it the way it is, and then taking out this closet, which is about 30 or 40 square feet, it takes care of the trick, that we don't exceed the FAR.
Why don't you look at your notes?
We're adding 55 square feet there, so that 55 square feet, we can give back, and then take the closet out, which, as I mentioned, is about another 30--
What do you mean, what do you mean, the 55 you give back?
On that first floor, that nook, in the kitchen area, that we wanted to enclose, we just won't do that. It'll keep it as it is, and it'll still allow us to do the addition to the, to the street level.
And so how much is that?
So what's your net?
Yeah, what's the total?
Total, what we're going to be adding will now be, it's 175, we'll add, we'll be adding about 90.
As opposed to 170?
So 90 is the total?
Total.
Can I ask you a question? So when you round FAR, do you round down if it's below 5?
I rounded everything up.
Or do you round up if it's, because if, if he's a little over, is it then rounded to 40?
Technically, we round it up, but I think, I have a point of clarification, if I can, I just went through the numbers again.
Uh huh.
I'm showing, if you can work through it with me, I'm showing the existing house to be 2586, and then with the addition of 175, gets you a total of 2761. I'm showing that the maximum allowable floor area is 2748, with the difference of 13 square feet being over.
I don't, I don't even know why we're hearing this, but--
But it's over the, I mean, in terms of what staff can grant, if it goes over the floor area ratio, it's not something that we can approve.
Got it.
What is, what is the staff approval, is it 100 square feet if it's within the FAR?
There's no allowance, we can't even approve 1 square feet over that allowed.
I want to stress, they did approve it, they did approve it, but they had to take that back, because legally, they can't do anything with FARs. That's what causes to come here.
So what you're saying is that there's a total of 13 square foot? That's what I'm coming up with.
Let me just, for a second, if I may, do you have any questions for the applicant or the appellant? Mr. Nazarian, you may be seated.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And unless you have questions from the staff, I'd like to go to, there are a couple of, no, one card here, that, from the public that I'd like to go to.
Please.
No questions from the staff. Mr. Cusman, we have the pleasure of hearing from you twice tonight.
Well, this is strange for me, but I live right down the street from that house, and I've driven by it two or three times to look at this project, and I couldn't support them doing what they're doing more. They should be allowed to do every last little square foot that they can to that house. All those houses on that street, they've got setback issues, they're all funky lots, and that's, that's a refreshing presentation, based on what we just, what we just came out of. So I'm here to tell you that I support that 100%, the whole thing. The guest house, the three feet, the two feet, let them have it. And if he wants to throw in a window, let him do it. I support that.
Appreciate your, your comments. Unless there are any, well, I can't close the public hearing yet, and there is, and I'm positive you don't want to rebuttal anything at this moment. So if you don't have any questions from the staff, may I close the hearing so we can deliberate very, this little deliberation for this little square foot about this topic?
Please.
Yeah.
Public hearing closed. Okay, so I'm all ears, commissioners.
Okay, I'll go.
Yeah, I don't think this is a present setting, and, you know, it was well presented. I'm willing to support.
Well, one thing I would point out is, we don't have any findings as part of, if you're looking at reversing the decision and approving, so one of the things we would need is, we could either add findings here and hear from you, or you can direct staff to return with findings.
And if you don't mind, I would like to have staff, direct them to come back with findings, but I will tell you one thing, I've seen breezeways closed, if for nothing, just for energy saving, Mr. Stotler. And if that's going to play in your findings, you're more than welcome to use my comments on it. Having said that, any other, there is, yes, Ms. Landrigan?
I move that, upon review and consideration of all materials and exhibits of current record relative to variance case number PVAR 1413376 located at 326 Kempton Road, and after having conducted an appeal hearing on said matter, that the Planning Commission hereby reverses the planning hearing officer's decision and approves said variance case number PVAR 1413376 in accord with revised findings and conditions, which will be presented to us at a later date.
Second.
Rule call, please.
Planning Commissioners, Landrigan.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Manoukian.
Aye.
Yes, Ayen.
Aye.
Chairperson Astorian.
Yes. Thank you, thank you for all, for all coming. Item number eight on our agenda is Planning Commission items. Old business shows none, new business shows none, unless you want to add something immediately, you're more than welcome to. If not, Community Development Department updates. Would you please keep it down, folks? We still are in deliberate, not deliberation, but in meeting. All right, item number 10, comments from commissioners. Hearing none?
Congratulations.
May I please have this adjourned?
Thank you.
So moved.
Thank you.